Ms. Starne speaks to that roll call, please.
Mr. Jeter, District One.
Here.
Mr. Tipton, District Two.
Here.
Mr. Compton, District Three.
Here.
Mr. Haron, District Four.
Here.
Mr. Mann, District Five.
Here.
Mr. Hood, District Six.
Here.
And Dr. Redline at large.
Here.
Thank you. I appreciate everybody being here this morning, getting moving. We move to item number four. You've been supplied with an agenda for today's meeting that was put together at the end of last week. Is there any changes or additions to the amendment as written?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
All right, we have a motion?
All seconded.
All right, Mr. Mann makes a motion, Mr. Tipton seconds to approve the agendas supplied to us. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you very much. Also, you have been supplied with minutes from our March 1st, 2017 meeting. Had a chance to go over those. Any changes or amendments to the minutes as provided? Hearing none, do have a motion for a minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Tipton makes that motion, have a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Jeter seconds. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the minutes are approved, as written. All right, we move to item number six, which is our citizens' expression period. This is a period in the meeting when anyone who wishes to address the board or the staff may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium, state your name, where you're from in the county, or what organization you represent. The board may or may not respond to anything you say but will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one has signed up to speak, which we do, I'm not aware of anyone who's signed up to speak this morning, and if that's the case, then we have no particular order. We just ask that you take turns and speak your business. Any action that needs to be taken based on requests or comments from citizens' expression will have to be taken after we close citizens' expression period. So with that being said, we will now open citizens' expression period.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning. Good morning.
My name's Deborah Horn, I'm mayor of Towne and Dugannon. This is Nina Baker, she's on our management team and she's also a council member. I'm here today because, as y'all well know, the Towne and Dugannon has received a $700,000 CEBG grant. We've been working on it for the past three years. And have come now to the point to where we are getting ready to get started, making some changes in our town, doing facade work. And we've came here today to ask that the board would forego the cost of the permits for inside our town.
All right, you're talking about construction permits to start to do work inside the town for this grant work?
Yes, sir.
All right. Questions, comments?
I talked to the mayor about this a couple times and told him to come on and do this this morning, that I see problems if we do it for churches and nonprofits, and sure we'll do it for Towne and Dugannon. And I want to commend them for the work she's doing over there, and all of you, all doing great. Get a chance, go look for yourself, and you will see some improvements there, it's really been good. Sidewalks are coming, we got a lot of money to spend and a lot of hard work we did to that, to get that grant. And so granting these waivers on these permits, I think, is the right thing to do. As I talked to the mayor about some other things going on there, and about the town, it's working out really good. So I do recommend that we approve this permit waiver fee for the Towne and Dugannon, these projects are about to take off.
And I'd also like to invite the board to come to Dugannon on April the 27th at 6:30. We are having an open house. We're going to have all of our drawings of everything that will be going on in the Towne and Dugannon and the phases that it will be done. And we'd like to invite all of you to come and visit with us in our town.
Is that eight in the morning?
Yes, sir, 6:30.
6:30.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to ask the mayor to give it to building officials to create some sort of waiver so that he will know what is grant-related projects when they come to him.
What phase was that?
The open house is on April the 27th.
All right. We appreciate your request, and we appreciate the work you're doing. And $700,000 worth of work anywhere in this county is wonderful. We appreciate y'all going up and receiving that award. And the board will certainly discuss, and if there's any action to be taken, we'll do that when we close citizens' expression.
Thank you all very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
It'll be just in a few minutes, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Board, Bill Dengus, Assistant County Administrator and Director of Public Works, would just want to bring to the board's attention the grant and efforts made by Ms. April Addington at Twin Springs High School, the environmental research teacher. Last year, they applied for a grant from Kirby, and their focus was an anti-litter campaign, where they have gone to the elementary schools that feed Twin Springs High School, and has done litter, anti-litter workshops with the kids there. They also sponsored a anti-litter slogan contest where the kids were able to draw a picture of an anti-litter slogan, and they picked one that would be a sign that the county would use at their solid waste centers. So they did that, and Ms. Natalie White at Nicholsville won, and here's the slogan, "Litter bugs bug me." So, show it to the camera and the folks. And I think all of us can go along with that sentiment, that litter bugs bugs. So you'll be seeing these at the solid waste centers, the grant paid for these signs. And if there's any leftover, I'll look for other private places in the county to put. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, fantastic. We certainly don't mind you all coming, Mr. Faust, but we will, on the particular topic, I think that you all have been discussing, that it will be next on the agenda, right after citizens' expression. We'll certainly let you guys present your case, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. All right, we're in citizens' expression.
Morning, Lee Chairman.
Good morning.
I'm John Burger, I'm his sheriff, so a few things to go over today. On the first, March, on the first day of the month, I didn't have a report ready for February, so I got a February and a March report today. I go with the February before first, this is the least amount of calls I've seen in a long time in February. Maybe it was a little bit cooler or something, stayed in, I don't know, but since we wanted to leave. We had 4,423 calls, county dispatch, sheriff's office got 567 of those calls. We had 26 domestic violence calls, we served 128 felony warrants, 55 misdemeanor warrants, we made 53 drug charges, four drunk riding charges, issued 113 traffic summonses, 17 motor vehicle accidents, served 427 civil papers, we had seven investigations, 47 unclosed with the rest. We had 314 man hours of courtroom security, had 15 out-of-state extraditions, we had five in-state transports, two traffic checkpoints, unlocked 27 vehicles, and traveled 42,952 miles. That was February. The month of March, we had 6,192 calls from community dispatch. Sheriff's office got 688 of those. We had 25 protective orders and domestic violence calls, 151 felony warrants served, 75 misdemeanors, 39 drug arrests, two drunk riding charges, 76 traffic summonses issued, 18 motor vehicle accidents, 494 civil papers served, 114 investigations, with 61 of them closed with the rest, 327 hours of courtroom security, 13 out-of-state extraditions, four in-state transports, four traffic checkpoints, 33 vehicles unlocked, and a travel of 47,566 miles. So my parole pretty busy. And I've got something else here to go over. We're trying to get our asset forfeiture straightened out, and it's been the only problem really for as long as I've been a sheriff. What the trouble is, it's hard to, I guess, to start with, when we, the money going into DCJS, everything we've confiscated, all the money goes to Department of Criminal Justice, every dime of it. Then they take their percentage out, they get 10 percent, then they send it back to the treasurer. It goes like 25 percent, what comes back to Marcus, and 75 percent to the sheriff's office. It's hard to keep up with it because the way we've been pulling from it, I guess, the common attorney's office worked all the courthouse and stuff, it's been difficult over the years to keep it straight. If it ain't to the exact penny, when we send something to DCJS, they won't send nothing back to us because it's off 10 cents or a dollar or whatever. But what we're trying to do is get it fixed where we can keep up with it and know what we got, and then we can have easier way and take the trouble off the treasurer a little bit. We got $15,000 in the account, and what we're asking to do is get that put over into the sheriff's office account, put in the Bank of Scott County. That way we can keep up with it, and whenever Missy gets the money back from us, it comes into the general fund, it can be distributed a whole lot easier and keep up with it easier. So I think Bill may be afraid of knows what's going on, or what we've been talking about, and just trying to take the pressure off and keep up with it a little easier. And I can try to explain it any better if I've got any questions.
All right. Anybody have any questions with sheriff, or any comments?
We've got $15,000 in there, we don't spend much of it, unless we have to. Any money you got through the drug asset forfeiture has got to be going to law enforcement. You can't stop it, it's supposed to be in the general fund. So we're trying to get it all straightened out. We're not here just to spend the money, we're just trying to straighten the problems out. I appreciate you.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, sir. Okay. We'll, Sheriff Puckett, if there's a action to be taken to take care of that money, we'll take care of that during the county administrator's section later in the meeting.
I'll be around, any questions?
Thank you, sir. All right. We are in citizens' expression period. For anyone who wishes to speak on anything that's not listed further in the agenda. Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll close citizens' expression period. We appreciate your comments and appreciate you being here. We have one item to take up, gentlemen, concerning that particular part of the meeting, the request from Towne and Dugannon to waive permit fees for their construction on this grant project. I'll open the floor for any discussion or actions.
What Bill was saying, Bill, you were talking about needing to know the individual projects, is that what you were saying on these, or?
He will need some sort of waiver to know that when a contractor comes in that might be doing these projects, that is part of what Ms. Horn is talking about, part of those grants. And it's not something separate that the contractor is doing on his own.
Can we do a blanket waivers to cover all of them?
Yeah, I was just thinking something that she may sign, or that they would have, that would let him know that he could put his documentation that the board had waived the fees on that.
Without making a motion, we approve this waiver for Towne and Dugannon.
All seconded. All right. Mr. Mann makes a motion, we waive the construction fees on any project related to the grant in the Towne and Dugannon. Mr. Compton seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Y'all are good to go. Now, you don't have to go, you can stay, but. All right, we thank you, and we look forward to seeing once you get done over there. All right. We move to item number seven. Item number seven on the agenda is an advertised public hearing on the abandonment of Route 697, Lark Spur Lane, from Route 700, Fowler's Branch Road, to a dead end, a total distance of .35 miles. This is a topic we've discussed a couple times in the past. The board knows some about this particular issue, and it worked through the process, went to the planning commission, and then was advertised for a public hearing before we make a decision on it. And so today is the day of the advertised public hearing. There'll be several people here who need to speak on this. And Mr. Dengus, do you want the public to go first on this? Or does staff have any input first, or how do we want to work this?
I'm not aware of staff has any input.
Okay.
Public's fine.
All right. Well, if that being the case, we will open the public hearing. And anyone who wishes to speak on this topic may do so in any particular order. Good morning.
Morning.
If you could, before you start, if you could state your name, please.
I'm Preston Faust.
Neil Faust.
All right, thank you.
And we own property that joins the property that Mr. Humphries has bought. And at this time, I wish to close the closing of that road, and try to work something out with Mr. Humphries to continue the agreement that was made between my father and Mr. Willie Quillan years ago, that close the road crossing my property and Mr. Quillan's property in order to have access in case my cattle get down there on his property, or in the event that he has cattle and they come up on my property. And also, sometimes I have to walk in that way to feed my cattle in the winter due to the river flooding. And anybody who is on property along the river knows, river sometimes takes fences out. Sometimes people take fences out at that road. So I need to have, you know, to try to work something out with Mr. Humphries that the gentleman that I do not know. And hopefully, we can come to an agreement where I can have access myself, my son, or anyone working for me. To, you know, recover the cattle, or possibly bring a tractor in that way to feed cattle, but I cannot ford the river with a tractor.
Basically, what's going to happen is, with the agreement we've had with previous owners, okay, and the abandonment of this road, we're going to be landlocked, okay? We will have no access other than forward the river. The agreement we've always had in the past, had we needed to access our property or they needed to access ours, it was a free come and go, okay? We didn't, they didn't call us, we didn't call them. Been that way for 75 years, okay? I guess Dad and I, when we got behind the eight ball on this, we didn't even know that the Quillan property was for sale. We by accident found out that this road closure was, we were having, we were having, we were having problems with somebody's dogs killing newborn cows, and we were down in there looking for the dogs, and noticed the signs, okay, on this road management. Like that Dad and I, neither everyone, Mr. Humphries, we would definitely like a chance to work some, try to work something out with him prior to closing this road, or, you know, just see where it takes us. There is, I guess, one thing we need to hold in reserve is to have the road reopened. And I don't think anybody wants that. But we can, I think that is within our rights to petition the board to have the, have the, have the whole road reopened.
In the original agreement between my father and Mr. Quillan, which happened many years ago, if either landowner ever wanted the road reopened, it could be reopened. I don't remember what the road number was, I expect it was road number 700. Due to the fact that 700 comes down to Lark Spur, and I think it came on up, this was the number that came on up the river, forwarded the river, and Faust Ford went up the river, forwarded the river again, and Hart Ford, and tied back into 700. However, I also remember when you first come down Road 896, which comes to the river, and it forked off and forwarded the river there. I think it was seven, there was a road sign there, it had three or maybe four different road numbers on it, which that road did. My father and Mr. Quillan had closed, it went down the river and forked direct Fowler's Branch. One road went up the branch to the other, forwarded the river again, and tied onto the road coming in by Nottingham. What we're interested in is the section that come up Fowler's Branch over, and runs over into Car, ties into Carver Valley. Comes down Fowler's Branch, up the river, across our property, and back out Brickyard Gap. Road 896 is what concerns us, the rest of it.
Mr. Faust, sir, either one of you, you own a big farm there on Faust Ford Road.
Yes, sir.
Correct. And the land we're talking about that you own, that's relative to this closure, is part of that farm that's across the river.
Yes, sir.
Correct, okay? Don't get me, don't get me wrong, and don't let me make this sound accusatory, but that part of the farm that's across the river is your only legal access to it by forwarding the river? I'm talking about.
Yes, at this time, it currently is.
So you've owned this farm for some years, and that part across the river, the only actual, I guess, legal access that you have on a deed or whatever, would be to cross the river?
Yes, sir.
Forward the river?
Right.
But you've been able to work with this landowner for years and years to get in there if you needed to?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. And it doesn't, and your land doesn't join Lark Spur, it's actually a farm over from Lark Spur that you would have to cross over, Mr. Humphries?
No, sir, our land, we joined.
We joined the Quillan property, which is now Mr. Humphries' property.
Correct, yes, you joined Mr. Humphries' property, but your farm doesn't.
Our farm does not, our farm does not join Lark Spur.
Okay.
No, sir, it does not.
All right, I want, that's for my own education. Thank you, continue if you wish.
Lark Spur.
The agreement that your father and Mr. Quillan had, was it verbal or was it a written agreement?
It was verbal, it was the best I got.
It may have been written, written or may not have been. And I don't really know if my father went to the board of supervisors, or if he went to DMV. Back at that time, I don't know what the laws were on that, they may have gone to Division of Motor Vehicles and had it closed, or they may have come before the board. But I did go to a courthouse, and we looked, may not looked in the right years, but I did not find anything, and the ladies in the court office looked, they did not find anything in writing, which I don't know if there is or if there is not. But I remember my father coming home from a meeting where they had the road closed, and saying that it was closed with the agreement that if either landowner ever wanted that road reopened, it could be reopened.
There's nothing in writing, as far as you know?
I don't know if there is or if there is not.
Well, let's say we do close the road, would you still need some kind of access across his property to? Either way, it's closed or don't close, that you're going to have an agreement with him across his property?
That's what we hope to work out with us, Mr. Humphries. But we would like to oppose the road, close it, until we have opportunity to work something out with Mr. Humphries. We don't want to be a thorn in his flesh, we just want to work something out with him.
Well, this, what I'm going to say is, to avoid this situation again, if you all came to an agreement and you got, say, in writing that you had, if the river got up and you all couldn't access your property down there where you had been forwarding the river, and we'll say the water got up and it, you couldn't get in there, you need, you would need a written right of way to access your property from that Lark Spur road?
That's what we'd like to have, yes, sir.
We want an agreement, or probably with the help of. What I'm saying is, if you, in order to avoid this situation again, if you had that in any other previous landowners, after, say, you or Mr. Humphries or whoever owned it now, would make care of the problem from now on, only if he wanted to access that part that you're all saying that you, you know, you have to go down there, if the water gets up, you need to go down there and go in that way. How far, how far across his property would you need to go?
It's approximately three quarters of a mile.
Three quarters of a mile to maybe as much as a mile.
In order to get to your property, lad?
I'm sorry, Mr. Dengus.
I said, in order to get, from where you in, the Lark Spur lane. From where Lark Spur ends to our property, the way, the way the right away, the previous right away came, or the state right away, is approximately one mile. Okay. It's, I'm not sure, I'm just, I'm just giving you my best guess, Mr. Compton.
So whether the road closes or not, I think is what has been alluded to. You'll need to work out an agreement with Mr. Humphries?
We would very much like to have an agreement with Mr. Humphries. Should we need to access our property via his property, we, you know, we need right to access, okay?
You need, you probably need to get that right.
It would be better.
Bill, can you show us, sir, exactly how it lays, I've seen one which is.
You look at the map on the screen, you see Lark Spur Lane coming down here to the end. That's the road in question today as far as closing. And this is Mr. Humphries' property. And this is the peninsula that Mr. Faust has concern with, that he owns and would need access to.
and would need access to.
You see, you see Mr., Mr. Humphries, that's Mr., that yellow line there, I'm assuming is Mr., Mr. Humphries, come right, right straight on down to the river from where you're at, right there.
Down here?
Yeah, right there. The old road come right down through there, just the way your corner's going, and right up the river, right there. That yellow line right there is approximately the, I'm going to say is the property boundary of the, the...
I have a flat here of my property over there, a few old fish to look at, and I also have an old map that shows part of the roads and...
If, if y'all would allow me, I, I can, if y'all would allow me... This would be Larkspur right here, okay? The, the old state route, follow the creek, this Fowler's branch come right down through here, okay? Right here is where Fowler's branch comes into the river, okay? The old state right-of-way come right down through this, why we call it, we call it Hollow, okay?
Right.
It come right down through this Hollow, this field here, down to the river, come back up the river, join our property here, okay? Come all the way up to the river, and this would be Faust Ford right along here, I think, for the eight base, that's where it is, comes across, okay, this is...
That's what, that's what...
Brickyard Gap, okay?
Brickyard.
Okay, Brickyard Gap, come across right here, it's ford to the river right there, come all the way down across our property, down here to Fowler's branch, and come back up here and join what you call Larkspur.
Is there a tractor?
There is a...
Navigatable road here?
Yes, there is, sir.
Okay.
Yes, there is.
What would you need, if you were left Fowler's branch yard, where would you be the closest point to get to your own property? Is that the way you'd need to travel, the way you pointed it out?
Yes, sir. This, this ridge through here is pretty much un-navigable.
Okay.
Yeah, you can walk it.
I see what you're saying.
But, you know, if you, if you've got moving equipment or cattle or something like that, it needs to go down the creek and up the river.
Sure.
Basically, what you're dealing with there is a river bluff.
Yeah.
We've all been around here in Scott County long enough to know what to get into there. Straight up and down, bill to go country.
Yeah. Rick, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, we delayed this for another month, give them a chance to work out some kind of agreement, Mr. Humphries, and will that re-advertise the public hearing and everything again?
No, we've got time, I don't think it's three or four months.
Give them a chance to work out an agreement, Mr. Humphries. Either way, you're going to have an agreement with him, if we close the road or if we don't, you still have to cross his property?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I, I would go with that myself, as, as far as delaying and get some, get these landowners on the same page, and see how, what they can work out before they, we make any action on closing any, anything. Once you do that, it kind of, kind of hinges about doing so.
Yeah.
All right. We are, I agree, I agree totally. We are still in public hearing, there's other landowners here, and I think we ought to hear from anybody here who has any input at all first, and let's continue the public hearing, and we'll finish the public hearing, and then we'll discuss how we want to move ahead. All right? Thank you all for your explanation.
Thank you.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is Rick Barker, I think everybody here knows me. The, I'm being one of the landowners that Larkspur crosses, the first landowner. I think the board is aware that Mr. Humphries and myself have come to an agreement, a mutual agreement between each other as far as access, him accessing his property across my property, and in me having some access on his property also. And I think that agreement would basically take care of my part with Mr. Faust if Mr. Humphries comes to agreement with him, because under our agreement, if he gives Mr. Faust authority across his property, that automatically gives him authority across me. The county attorney could probably elaborate on that a little bit, but I think that would take care of my part, and I have no objection whatsoever to Mr. Faust coming in there under those emergency situations where he needs to feed his cows or cows out or whatever. I think that's Mr. Humphries' feelings also, which he's here, and I'm sure he'll speak to you about it, but pending Mr. Faust's agreement or whatever, I'm, I'm satisfied and would like to move forward with this road closure. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Humphries? First name is? John. Yes, sir, thank you. Well, I appreciate the board, been a pretty long drawn-out process, and obviously working hard down there, and I never had missed, met Mr. Faust either, so, but the bottom line is, I'll have to move forward with it, and I'll certainly work an agreement out with him. I'm not going to keep him from getting to those farmers' cows, and so I'll work out an agreement with him to get that done and move forward with this road closure. Mr. Faust's not the one I want to keep an eye on, so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll move forward with that, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'll tell you my, what I was trying to discuss was, could we have a motion, could we have a motion for closure contingent upon them breaching an agreement? And, you know, all the parties say that they're willing to work out an agreement. It's probably best that we have that agreement first, but, you know, we want to be sure that, you know, nothing happens and there's not a disagreement and then somebody gets shut out. I'll read that, Mr. Chairman. There would be no, Ms. Kegley has said that once we have the public hearing, we do not have to have another public hearing. So there would not be, it would not be necessary for everybody to come back and rediscuss and rehash this out before we have another, before we made a decision if we had a delay. My, I know all these people, and my personal feeling is that I think they're going to work all this out, it's all going to be fine, and I'm not leading the board, I'm not trying to lead you, but my feeling is I'd rather have this agreement finalized and concrete before I make a vote on, before I vote on something as important as closing the road. Totally. Now, I'll go along with whatever, if you all have heard enough to make you confident today to go ahead and vote, then I'll certainly go along with that.
When I see these gentlemen shaking hands and they've come to agreement, I think their word is worthy, and I see us ended today, because, I mean, if they get your agreement, that's fine, I think they're all, I mean, I like seeing that, they worked it out right here today, and so I believe we can put this behind us and move on, because they've, all, all parties are involved, are here, they spoke, and we see it's worked out, and so, all right? I believe we can go ahead and move on and get access today.
Let me ask a couple real quick pointed questions to the Faust family. Is this basically an emergency agreement? You all won't be going in there twice a week, it'll be an issue of when you need to go in just on an emergency basis?
Sure, we need to, just when we need to. But David also, I think I agree with what you were saying a minute ago, this thing does, you know, it does not have to come back before the board, okay? But I, myself, and I think Dad, and realistically probably Mr. Humphries, and Mr. Barker, I think it would be better for everybody involved if we had something on paper prior to this vote, okay? I mean, you know, Dad and I aren't that hard to get along with, and I'm sure Mr. Humphries isn't, but it's the same, same time, yeah, we've, we've met here this morning, kind of shook hands, but this is the first time I ever laid eyes on a man, okay? And this first, driving off, this is the first time he ever laid eyes on me. I, I just, I would feel more confident if we had some type of agreement prior to the vote.
Well, Mr. Humphries, you, you've heard their testimony, and you know they're not going to, they have said they're not going to be coming in across, only under emergency circumstances, and you don't have any reason to believe you all won't be able to work out an agreement?
No, I don't. The only thing that I would say to the board is, and I think Mr. Faust would understand is, now that I got a tractor and some other things down there, getting that road closed is more, I mean, for me, one more week or one more day is, is, you know, I've been waiting a long time, and obviously I do, I believe in contracts and all this other stuff, but in front of all you guys, in front of them, if I shake your hands and I say that, hey, we're going to work it out, I just, I guess time has become a little bit more pressing for me, and I got a lot of money down there sitting there, and I need to get the road closed, so, but I'll, I'll work with them, whatever they want to do.
Okay, all right. Well, everybody's heard it, so I'll, I'll see. Is there any, let me close public hearing unless there's someone else who needs to speak. Let's do it in order.
Could we ask Mr., Mr. Humphries, could you state again why you was, why this petition came up for closing the road, the road to begin with?
Well, I just had a lot of folks coming down to the end of my road and whatever they were doing, and, you know, and reopening this property has been a little outing for the folks that were traveling this road and doing whatever, drinking or whatever they were doing down there, so it's, I really want to keep those folks off, off the bottom end of the property.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I want to thank you guys all for working this out, it really makes our job a lot easier, and I'm good, it's good to see neighbors work together instead of fussing and growling and everything. When you start that, it's just a big snowball, and I really appreciate y'all working together, and I think that we can do like David said, make a motion that the road will be closed continuous, that y'all work agreement out amongst y'all and it be fine.
With the, with the, with the contingency between both parties are satisfied with the agreement, you know, if you're all, we can make that motion as long as both, all parties are in agreement, you know?
Sure. All right, first of all, is there anyone else who wishes to speak? All right, with that, we'll close public hearing. Now, we'll open the floor for a discussion or a motion as you all were putting together.
I'll make a motion that we vote with the, with the exception that if it passes to close that road, that all parties involved, being the Mr. Faust and Mr. Humphries and Mr. Barker, are all in agreement with, with what has to be done, with, they all were agreement with what they're doing, that we can close it today. But if not, they can come back and we can reopen this road. I'll make that motion.
There's a draft resolution in your extra packets that would be the resolution that you would adopt to abandon it.
Can you test it and end it?
Well, I, I don't know if you can make your motion that you're adopting that resolution contingent on, but I still think you have to revisit it later to make it final.
Final?
Yeah. You either make it final today or later. I don't think the contingency is going to work with this situation.
Mr. Chairman, regardless of the closure of Lake Spur Lane, he's, you're still going to have to have an agreement between Mr. Faust and Mr. Humphries to cross his property if you left this Larkspur open, because it only goes to Mr. Humphries' gate. So there's still no right-of-way for Mr. Faust to go across Mr. Humphries. So closing this road wouldn't make any difference on an agreement.
Right.
You would still have to have an agreement.
Yeah, I think there's something about, there might be something in writing that Mr. Faust and him hasn't located yet.
But what Bill's saying, either way, they got to have an agreement.
Right.
Because the road don't go all the way to the Faust's property, so either way, if we do it or don't, they got to have an agreement.
But that's what he was giving at, they, they might be a, a written right-of-way that he hasn't found yet in some of the court, or papers up at the courthouse.
Now, I, I said we can go with the road closure, because either way, they got to get an agreement, they got to do that either way, and so it's just pay it now, pay it later, do it now, then they can work their agreement out later, but I can't see that being contingent on that, simply because either way, they have to get an agreement, like Bill said, and I said in the beginning, and they have to do that regardless of what we do here today. Go ahead, close the road and make it final, then make, work out their agreement, which, which was not, blew nothing to do with us.
Right.
Has nothing to do whatsoever with what we do. So we've heard the all parties speak about it, and they've agreed, and they got to get an agreement either way, if we do or if we don't, so let's go ahead and do it and put this behind us, it's been going a long time, Mr. Humphries said he wants it done, I don't blame him, they've got a long time, and they, it's hard to get everybody together at one time, but it's happened, we see it happen here today. So let's go ahead and make the, make the close like they said without any strings attached, because either way, they have to get an agreement, that's not up to us. It's not up to this board, you see, this agreement works out between them, that's a private issue, and so I say we close it.
And it is a private issue, and what I saw today here between the Fausts and the Humphries, you know, for me, it satisfies me to go ahead and move forward with closing the road like was to begin with, because such as Danny says, it doesn't have anything to do with the road.
Problem matter.
You still got to, you still got to have, you still got to have that agreement between you either way, or the road's still going to close.
All right, Mr. Compton, Ms. Kegley says we can't have a motion with a contingency in it, so can you rescind that motion, please?
Yes.
And then we'll open the floor for any other...
I'll make a motion, we'll close the road as the resolution here.
An aye second. Mr. Tipton makes a motion, we go ahead with the road closure and approve the resolution as written, Mr. Mann seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right. All opposed?
Aye.
All right.
You all are voting for it.
Okay. All right, so we have six, six and one. Gentlemen, we'll, I'll say this on behalf of this board, in this, in the spirit of speeding this along, we went out on a limb today for you all, based on your all's statements, that you will all three work out an agreement that everybody has access to their properties. So we hope that that will follow through, we took a risk doing it early, but we expect all of you... We took a risk doing it early, but we expect all of you to cooperate and work out an agreement so it doesn't come back on us. Is that fair enough? Yes, sir. All right, well, as far as we know, all three property owners are going to be satisfied and get what they have asked for. But we went out on a limb a little early, so let's follow through with that and we look forward to being notified that that's been done. Thank you very much. Gentlemen, I took a little time, ladies, gentlemen, it took a little bit of time. That's why we're here, I guess, but we're doing our best to see that we can appease everybody that's possible and so I thank you for your patience with that. We moved to item eight, which is an advertised public hearing on the possible adoption of an ordinance to amend and reenact in its entirety the indoor clean air ordinance of Scott County, Virginia, to reflect the law as it now reads in the Code of Virginia. Ms. Kegley, would you like to expand on that, please?
This is just housekeeping. We fell out of compliance after they changed the code. And this is just to get us back into lockstep with that. The only, it's the same ordinance, the only substantive difference is if there were any civil penalties ever assessed, that that money would have to be expended solely for public health purposes. But I don't think that would be much, or of much concern, but that's the only substantive change.
All right. At this time, we will open the public hearing for anyone wishing to speak on this ordinance. Hearing none, we'll close public hearing. All right. And open floor for any discussion or action.
Make a motion to approve.
Mr. Mann makes a motion that we amend and reenact in its entirety the indoor clean air ordinance of Scott County with the changes that are made in the Virginia State Code. Do I have a second? Mr. Jeter seconds. All in favor, signify I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.